Welcome everyone to the house. Today is the twenty second. Can we please stand? Anyone have any questions about the agenda?
Just need to put on the executive session contract matter. Like to approve the agenda with that addition.
Every second? I can invite now, all favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Anyone have a chance to look at the minutes Paul sent us?
They were good. I like to approve them.
Every second?
A second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Great. Go over to review for it then?
Um, yeah.
Okay. Let's start with you Joel. Paving done, one party.
Paving is not done.
Well, the big sponsor.
Paving is going to be done.
Yeah, but two big spots are really.
Yes, by Town Hill Road where that culvert replacement was by the town cemetery done. Uh, where the steel plates were done and then uh, Wilk is going to be coming to town Wednesday. We'll be grading out by Town Farm Road where it's all gravel up there over the culvert and over where we did the bank stabilization. They're gonna be, we're gonna be grading that down to get to the depth that they want to get the right amount of asphalt in there to make a good base and make that good and solid. And then Thursday they're gonna start paving. They may also be paving Friday and Saturday or they may skip some days and come in next week, but it looks like uh, I'm told maybe five days in Polley to complete all the paving between the town and the village. Paving projects for the year, so.
But there's one lane you said it's gonna.
It'll be one lane, yeah. So nothing's actually gonna be closed. I mean, you might have to wait a little bit for for alternating lane traffic um, or just to move equipment around or or whatever, but but nothing will be completely shut down to the traffic, so. Um, if I had a better timeline as to where they're gonna start, what days they're gonna do this road, what days they're gonna do that road, I would certainly tell you, but I don't know, so I can't tell you.
It's gonna be pouring rain too.
Then they probably won't pave Thursday. If it's pouring Wednesday, it probably won't be grading the road either, so we may just move on to next week. I'm not sure it's alternative as.
Yeah.
Yeah, but as of now, the plan is to try to get started this week and get get it going and get it knocked down. Uh, grants and aid was completed last Tuesday, so we're done with uh, our MRGP year. Grants and aid work for the year and Sarah and I are just finishing the finalizing the grant for submission. Now we'll be done and uh, we're changing up gears. We're we're gonna, you know, we're we're kinda making ourselves available for the paving thing as that happens next week, because we're probably gonna do some driveway and driveway apron shouldering for the unpaved driveways. And we're buttoning up our winter sand for our sand shed for the year. Truck four and truck six are still out for repairs. And um, we're just, we're trying to like heavy things down around the garage and get ourselves all prepared for the shift of seasons and and whatnot. I was advised this first thing this morning that that the cones and barrels out on one forty by the town farm road were hit and uh, two of us went out there to go check on that and in the eastbound lane, there was only two road cones and four barrels left out of Talably. And the fifteen maybe and a couple of the ones that were left were completely destroyed, so I don't know what's going on with with the if it was intentional, if it wasn't intentional. I mean, I I don't know, but I mean, it's it's just kind of it's ridiculous if you add it up. If I knew exactly how many were out there, you know, it's a fair amount of money. The taxes have paid for these signs and equipment and stuff like that, and then people just go out there and completely disrespect that, so.
You think they took them? Cause they're not, why couldn't they just take them?
Again, they flattened some and I would say that they they took the other ones, but.
They were set off the river just by.
Yeah, they were, they were all set pretty nicely down through there, so I would encourage anybody that sees anybody tampering with signs or anything like that, this is your tax money. You know, it, we have to replace it, so you know, report it, call, tell someone, call law enforcement because there's nothing, you know, yeah, it's great. I I I know about it, but I I don't have a badge and a gun, so um, there's nothing that I'm gonna do about it. Yeah, Barney place. Um, so it's really all I've got at the moment.
So it looks really good. I go up there, took it, it looks really good. And I thought Kevin doing roadside mowing today?
Kevin was out doing roadside mowing.
Just good, and the people, that's what that's, that's good.
Yeah, we will be out. You'll see the roadside mower out and uh, we're gonna be trying to knock back some places, you know. In the previous years, we had the accelerator with mulching head, which is an awes- awesome asset. It's a good way to beat beat the right of way back, but now that we have the boom mower, this is how we can maintain what we've done. We just have to have the time in order to be able to do that and as we know, we've got a relatively busy summer, so.
I think it's worth um, discussing what we discussed about the bridge down here, South Street Bridge.
Blueberry one, yeah. Um, I've spent a few random days and times um, out at the South Street Grove Street Bridge. And uh, particularly in the afternoon as the kids are going home from school. Because we don't, like I, I think I mentioned before, we don't have a hardened uh, barrier between the travel lane and the walkway for the kids and those young kids going through there and people are doing some ridiculous stuff. I took down a lot of New York and Vermont license plate numbers and wrote down the things that that they did. And I've also been actively trying to pass information along to the sheriff and hope to do something. I get it that nobody's perfect, but um, you know, we we can try to do the simple things. If we can't do the simple things, then I don't know. Um, but this is just constantly ongoing with speeding over the bridge, not not alternating terms of traffic, hitting hitting the barriers, hitting all that stuff, you know, right in front of town employees, people are running into the bear barriers and smashing them and then just driving off like, oh, doesn't doesn't matter to me. Um, barricades are constantly moved, so uh, I I did tell Paul last weekend about about it. But it's just, it's constant. Every time you go down there, there's there's constantly something going on. Some of these are are Polley residents that are doing this and some of them are other areas, so. I'm actually rather disappointed that the that the residents on the the south side of the bridge wouldn't be a little bit more respectful of the standard that V Trans uh, gave us to to hold up to. Uh, cause if everybody wants that bridge open, then everybody has to do their part to to keep it open, but at this point, I'm not sure what else we can really do to.
I don't think you're suggesting that people immediately south of the bridge, are you?
Um, you know, I I'm I'm not gonna say any specific places or specific names, but um, some within eye shot of the south end of Butler. And then others that knowingly live a little further out.
Um, I also think it's worth, we we have to have a conversation on when that bridge is gonna close. Because dirt, if it starts snowing, we're not gonna be able to maintain that bridge.
Yeah, our our truck that goes through there insults uh, the Dodge is is like twelve thousand pounds on it. You put the plow on it, you put the sander in it, and then you put salt in that. I'm sure we're over the sixteen thousand pounds. I I don't know what it, what the number is. We've never weighed the trucks loaded, but um, I'm sure we're probably over, so. And we obviously can't get any of our bigger trucks. I mean, that's our smallest, lightest truck, so if if that's not gonna make it over there fully loaded without having to follow the detour, we're certainly not gonna get a tandem on the other side without having to either go through New York State or go all the way through Wells and around.
So that's something we need to make sure that they're aware of that. If if it ever big snows, so I'm not, it's just going to be closed.
I mean, wait, Joel and I, Dicky talked about it this morning and we're vaddling around a couple of day curtains, cause we, you know, you never know when it's gonna snow.
Did a pinch those sidewalk rigs? Like, could we take a few passes with those or is it just not, it's a V plow on a tractor?
Yeah.
Yeah, it'd take forever.
What do you think is appropriate?
Sometimes snow flies by Halloween and other times snow doesn't fly till, you know, January even or the end of December, so.
Five seasons way, no.
Is that something that do we have to have a specific date or do we just say when it big snows and let it?
I think it would be easiest. If we're gonna intentionally close it, we need to have an intentional, we need to have a a date set. Um, because trying to mobilize us to scramble around at the last minute and go do four hours worth of detour remarking is is terrible. And if we can't wait till snow flies and then say, hey, we're gonna close it, we can't maintain the road, be out plumbing snow and also be spending four to five hours doing changing all the, I mean, we've got detour signs from here to Wells to Granville. We've we've got literally four to five hours worth of detour work to do. And that's what flipped the whole crew to relabel everything, so we have to go from weight rating to closed, so. Uh, I I don't have a, I I didn't come up with a specific date, Paul.
When is it? That bridge has to be in for the con.
It's supposed to be in like December first.
So do you want, I mean, we have, hopefully we have a little bit of time. Do you wanna think about it and come up with a date that we can let everybody know and post it?
Yeah, I, yeah. If anybody, if anybody has any any reason why it's specific or before or on or during or after a specific date, I'd be all ears to hear it, but I mean, the only reason I haven't pushed harder to close the bridge is cause we kinda need to be able to have emergency services to get over that in a timely manner and I don't wanna impede that and I also don't wanna be an inconvenience to be able to live on the south side of a bridge either, so. So yeah, we can, we can think about the date more and if anybody has any specific reason why on or after a certain date, I'd be open to hear that.
So you have any questions? I'll thank the guys for all you do. Get ready for the show. Thank you.
Later.
Later, yeah. Doesn't come until late, but it's gonna be a hard call either way. Too early or too late.
Significant snow on Thanksgiving. Yeah, maybe like while the kids have Thanksgiving break for school, be like a good transition, transition week, like hey, Thanksgiving's not a bad, when you get back, deeper time. Uh, either way, when we place, when we, when we do come up with a date, uh, I think we'll, I think it's safe to say we'll put it on the town page, V T alert and whatever's earlier advanced morning, we can maybe throw up a couple of our homemade signs with dates on there or something, put one at each end of the bridge. To give people a, you know, fresh shot of a warning as we can come up with, so.
Keep typing on our meetings just for the days, that's like. Great, thank you. There's their committee's outlet.
Yeah, that's me. So the first item was the, is the merger study. Um, so just I wanted to make sure that the board was fully aware because not all of the board members are a part of the merger committee. Um, the the final report was sent to the merger study committee on the sixteenth of September. Um, and I've asked the consultant to put it on the merger study website as well. Uh, there is a study, merger study website, so hopefully folks will um, be able to visit that and read the report. It is lengthy, so set aside some time. Um, so I think over one hundred and eighteen pages, something thereabouts. Um, and we will post a link on the town's website as well, um, so folks can connect to that. Um, so the CGR's presentation of that final report is scheduled for next Monday at the firehouse. It's being worn to special meeting. Um, and that will be on the town's website too, um, very shortly. The start time is at five thirty.
Five thirty.
Um, and they will be joining virtually from Chester, New York. Um, so that is wrapping up um, that project and then the next steps after that will probably likely fall to the merger study committee um, or the various boards and how they wanna approach the information that was given to them. Um, so the second thing we had was the ATV ordinance and I wanted to share with the board some of what's happened since the nine eight meeting that we had at the firehouse. Um, Jesse and Cheryl and I met and we had a really great meeting about um, the ordinance as it was written and some of the, you know, the history that kind of preceded that or the petition to the psych board. Um, and since that meeting, the work that I've done, um, actually the regional planning commission has done a lot of work, so thank you to Nick. Um, Nick's been helping us with um, collect a lot of information about regional um, ATV use and regional ATV ordinances in the communities in Western Rutland County. Um, so uh, the RPC Nick has created a regional map at the request, at our request that shows towns um, that have ATV ordinances, um, towns that do not, and um, it has, it's layered with other trail systems that are in the area as well as all of the class one through four roads that are in the area. So um, we have that piece of information to work, start to work with. Um, I also spent some time and reviewed the statewide comprehensive outdoor recreation plan, which is um, the go-to manual in terms of outdoor recreation throughout the state, its goals and um, where the state is headed in terms of um, growing outdoor recreation statewide. So um, there was not a lot in the score about ATV use. Um, but there was, there were three different um, sections, um, you know, mostly more noting the amount of trails that are throughout the state currently. Um, they fall under VASA, the VASA trails, because they are the only ones that have that information fully mapped. Um, so just as a point of reference, there, VASA has eight hundred miles um, maps throughout the state of Vermont already.
That starts from the north all the way to the south, right? Goes all the way through.
Yes, yep, it's the entire state. Um, and so according to the score, that's second only to the Vermont Mountain Bike Association, which has nine hundred and twenty-two miles. So that's a lot of miles throughout the state of Vermont that are already under some umbrella for um, ATV use. Um, another thing that um, happened, uh, in the RPC pointed out that Castleton is also reviewing was petition to have an ordinance for ATV use on their roads. So I reached out to the Castleton town manager to find out their process for review and uh, what they've been petitioned with. I don't have the um, I don't have the draft petition, but I did speak with the um, police chief in Castleton, uh, Chief Mantello, um, who is leading their review and we had just a rather quick conversation about it. Um, you know, they are, since it's with the police department, he, they will be focusing on safety review and enforcement. Um, but I think um, we may be a little bit farther along in terms of the information that we have collected and and what the petition and the ordinance, draft ordinance says. Um, so they, and we, I shared the map that the RPC made with Castleton, so we just started to um, you know, kind of approach this conversation as uh, neighboring municipalities. Um, and I think so where it's been left with the town in terms of review, uh, we had a meeting scheduled for last Thursday and unfortunately I was not able to keep that meeting day. Um, Jesse and Cheryl and I, and I think, I'm not sure Jay, if you were coming too, but.
I'm struck, too.
Okay, um, we were meeting to review the map that the RPC made and to review the ordinance for the specific roads that um, are included on it, because the um, Jesse's group did a really thorough job of identifying the roads that were petitioned in that ordinance. And I think from my perspective, um, it'd be really useful to start to map that and mark up the map that we have now from the RPC to see where um, where it connects with uh, you know, class three, class four roads, the types of roads that you might expect, expect ATVs to be on. Um, and where it connects to possibly other VASA trails that are already um, already in place. And start to get an under, a broader understanding, I think, would be helpful for this board in terms of um, you know, what that looks like in terms of mapped roads. It it's sometimes hard to envision that when it's written. I mean, we all know where all those roads are, but if you put it on a map and mark it up, then you start to really see what it is um, you're talking about and expectations for where people could be traveling. Um, so I, that's kind of my report on on what's happened. Uh, there is a large group of people here, so I, if the if the board wants to hear from folks, I don't know if you wanna do that under public comment or, you know, if you wanna open the floor now. But I do have three other things.
Good. Um, what do you think, Paul? Do you want to say another? Do you want to go forward and come back to?
It's up to you.
Yeah, just I wanna keep it just so it'll make your statements. I don't wanna turn into a lot of discussion, just enough discussion to make your points, because we already know, so that's what I'm hoping. Um, so yeah, if anybody wants, Jessica, I'll call on you first if you wanna comment, or I know you've been doing a lot more work, so if you wanna make the floor.
Well, I know there's concerns about what roads we're gonna allow and safety. Uh, I know there's um, complaints going through the town and village right now, especially thirty-one, people unauthorized traveling down those. Um, I tried to use the best point and I recommend to those people reach out to local law enforcement, because that's what they're here for. Um, voicing your concerns is great, but that's if somebody actually acknowledges it and acts on it. Uh, it seems like it's the same repeat offenders that are doing these violations on an unauthorized unauthorized road, even if the ordinance was to pass, it is still an unauthorized road. Route thirty-one is unauthorized. Um, there is no usage on it, it's a state highway, so um, I recommend to those people reach out to local law enforcement. I've had people say, it's not my job to do that. Um, well, we're a community and we're here to keep everybody safe, so if you're seeing a violation, please report it and you know, if you're not willing to report it, hopefully somebody else will. Um, you know, Paul does not need to get seventeen emails or phone calls saying, I have a dirt bike riding down the middle of Main Street. Call up the law enforcement. I know it's a concern. I know a lot of people are voicing their concerns. We're gonna do community policing, that's what we're here for. If people are out riding, look at Joel, he had road cones stolen. If people are out riding on those roads and they can be a deterrent. You know, you never know when somebody's gonna come down through there. You see something, you say something. You know, the roads, I know there, it's it's a heated, and we, we're not seeing eye to eye on it. Um, my plan is economic development, bring business back into Polley. We've lost too much already. I understand the concerns of Main Street. Main Street's not an authorized road. I've put in selected roads on the outside of the community, so it can allow villagers to get out to those dirt roads and, you know, class three and class fours. Uh, but if we wanna bring business into town, how are we gonna stimulate our economy if we don't allow people to come in here and do anything? It's great that people can go outside and enjoy the outdoors and the manner of their liking. But in the end game, I wanna make sure our businesses are staying afloat in town. If I can't get somebody to Toads or Taps or Polley House, what good am I really doing? Other than people are just bebopping around, having a good time. And and don't get me wrong on for that. Uh, but the big picture is business for everybody. With Sarah saying that other communities are also thinking about ideas for ordinances. If we had a connected road, say Blissville from Castleton, people from Castleton can now come over and spend money in our town. Bring that money back in, apply it towards our needed repairs. We can go ahead and possibly hire full-time law enforcement. Contract more hours, have that higher uh, visibility in our town.
But what's that, I don't wanna stop right there, but what's the first step? Cause I know we've talked about a lot of phases, cause there's still a lot of research that's still being done. Your first step is not going to Toads and going down there, so that's why I want people to know. They give the ordinance, for a timeframe or whatever it was, the board decides. It's not for that step. That's a long-range step that you're hoping will happen, but for the initial, what do you, what what's your first thought to to do the research on how it goes? What's your first thought?
Several town roads, there's a pretty comprehensive list that's been comprised as well as a select few towns that allow villagers to get out of town. Some people do not have the funds to go buy a trailer to get out of town. It also brings up the whole concern about more vehicle accidents, who's liable? If you're, we're saying you can't drive in town to get out of town, now you park on the side of the road and you have two individuals who are parked right next to each other on each side of the road and now you're hindering, you know, emergency vehicles. Um, we, we see it all the time. Honey season, people park on the edge of the road. It's a risk. People are gonna get hit. Now you have people parking across from each other, cause they're going as a group ride.
Yeah, I think um, I think, you know, talking to Jesse and the math, the math that he provided, like it all makes sense, you know, there, there's not a lot of unnecessary, like obviously he's met with Joel. He's met individually with Sarah, Cheryl. We've talked individually, so um, you know, it's not lost on me that he's being very thorough and like having in mind everybody, like, so we've obviously had naysayers and and that's fine, like not, we're not gonna get three thousand people on board with anything. Um, you know, unless it's like free money or something, but anyway, we've had naysayers, we've had, but right now there's no ordinance. So it's like, there's a chance an ordinance brings order that isn't already there, so like right now people are saying, well, I'm seeing four-wheelers on thirty-one and and we had a group going up Hampshire Hall or whatever it is, right now they're all illegal, illegal. So right now that all that is 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 uh, I know our issues, it's simple, it's not as simple as that, cause we don't even have a sheriff and like we have a part-time and like I get that, that it's kind of a, that's why we'll never really know until in my opinion, we try something, cause it's like everybody's the obstacles are clear. We're, we're, you know, we're kind of a dense, unique, small village town compared to some of these other towns that have ordinances like you know, Highgate and Benson and horrible, like they're a lot more like farmland. Um, so that's obvious and then just the sheriff response time and just like how realistic is that? I get that when people say that, but it's like, right now, everybody's illegal, you know, so and we have no chance to self-police, so if we make if we start something as a trial period, we have a chance to be like, okay, now, now we got something and we got a community and you know, not to put more work on Jesse and Gary and Travis and whatever, but like it's a small town, so if you're if we, if we do something for a trial period, you have the chance to be like, like we all know each other, you'd be like, dude, I saw it, your, your kids, your kids, you know, not, he's up on route thirty-one where it just gives us a chance to be like, we have an ordinance and now there's a clear yes and no, whereas right now it's just a bunch of wrongdoers, I guess. Um, so there's no chance for self-policing in my opinion. And and again, you met with Joel, all the roads make sense, like some of them are village roads, which at first, when I talked to Jesse, I was like, I really, I don't see like, I see that being the big issue here is like any sort of village access. Um.
I'd probably be mindful when those roads were selected, it's to lower risk and minimize risk.
That's what I, and and the more I sat with that, cause initially, yeah, my knee jerk was like, yeah, it's a can of worms, but the more I sat with the list and like Sarah said, when you see it listed, it's one thing when you like picture it as, you know, bold lines around the perimeter of town. It's not random roads, it's just like so there's not a bunch of ATV trailers parked on East Main Street, you know, it's it's so people can reasonably get to where they need to go. And right now it doesn't include the gas stations and the restaurants and all that stuff, cause we need to, when we talked, we still need to figure out that's great, but like where do they park? Well, well, so we talked like, you know, that's a future thing. Um, cause right now it's illegal to park ATV in a vehicle spot, so like we don't have any downtown parking, but it'd be nice if we figured something out and I agree with Jesse, it's if you can bring twenty people in on a Saturday to go to Toads after riding, that's a huge gap for, you know, Toads, Polley Pub, whatever, you know, a group of twenty guys, ready to drink beer and eat food is a pretty good economic boost. Um, that's my take on it. I mean, I've, initially I was kind of, I'm 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 in the village admittedly, so I have friends and family that are like, yeah, but like the more you really as thorough as he's gone down these avenues, it's clear that Jesse and his crew, whatever you wanna call it, it's not a bunch of just like.
Dirt nibbles.
Yeah, we wanna blow down some town, like that's all right. It's not, it's 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 very thought out and I do think there's economic benefits to it and all the stuff. I don't think he's blowing smoke in that, in that sense.
Anybody else on the board have any questions for Jesse or anyone that's here?
Um, I I did visit the town wells to look at what they have and they don't allow anything paved. And their dirt roads have to be connected to camps. Like I know, I know they're in roads either. So a well is not, I mean, up up, outside of Sawmill Hill and Land Hill Road and the areas inside there. You can't ride any wells. And 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 that's from from the that the the Wells Town, um, Town, Town Hall. Did you know that?
I did.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Yeah, so Wells is not totally open.
Cause I included that in the initial draft of the ordinance, I attached it. The Wells ordinance.
Is the snowmobile though, are they involved in this?
Um we had our last meeting or first meeting of the year last week. Um we discussed it, we talked about it. Um of course, it does not include vast trails. Uh those are track vehicles only, so it's not like the four-wheelers are just go hop on landowners for. Authorized snowmobiles. That is not the goal here. The goal is, as I discussed, is to speak to landowners in the area. As we start networking more, getting members, we know our neighbors, we can discuss it. Hey, can I make a bypass so I don't have to go on the road? Can I go from here to here through your property? But as I discussed, we all know that hunting season's coming up and no Vermont or that hunts is gonna allow me to go driving through their woods during hunting season. So I'm not gonna go ask a landowner, hey, I know it's rifle season, can I go drive through your woods? And it's not gonna happen. Uh but it's one of those long-term goals is that we network, we get landowner permission, we develop our own network. Uh Vasa is a great network, but Vasa is quite a distance away from us. There's a spot in West Rutland and a spot in Danby. And those riding sections are very small. Um I think collectively is eighteen miles between those trail systems. It's not a lot. Uh but if we can establish our own system, um people follow the rules of the road that we have in place, you know, the license registered and insured. It's the laws of the road, follow the laws. And we police ourselves and people that have received violations, they reach out and they notify law enforcement. I think that's the biggest hiccup that I'm seeing is that people love to complain about violations they're seeing, but nobody knows the correct action to resolve it.
What about the rail trail?
Rail trail is off limits, state highway.
Same thing as snowmobiles.
Uh snowmobile is a track vehicle, so they allow it. If you look at the marker on the trail, it says. So what we're trying right now is I did select some select roads to get out of town. Um most people that have side-by-side the four-wheelers out of town, they can leave from their home. Um I'm really trying to keep in mind our local village folks that are trying to get out and enjoy the sport. Um there's a gentleman that's spent here numerous times, not sure if he couldn't make it tonight, but he lives down by the Legion. He can't get out of town and if we allow from Granville to. Bentley to go furnace and then get over onto East Main, he can get out of town and he can go enjoy. His utilitarian vehicle or his four-wheel.
A couple of things if I can comment. My understanding is Vasa, do they have some sort of umbrella insurance policy?
They do. It's just like Vasa.
So you don't see a value in. Adding that as part of the prospective ordinance that. If the if you want to ride in Polley, you have to be a member of Vasa.
Well, we have your Vasa trails.
And if you're side-by-side, they treat it like a motor vehicle, so it is considered a motor vehicle. If you get into an accident or anything, you have property. Damage liability, you have, you know, only a first person, you have motorists, you have everything like your. Your Mario truck does, so it's the same thing. You have insurance, you have coverage.
I mean, with all due respect, you know, I could say, I got all the insurance in the world on my ATV and I could have nothing. So.
Well, you can't do. Yeah, Paul, I I the Polley Dirt Devils is established and you have to prove proof of registration insurance to sign up. You get a validation plate or validation.
So what do you you randomly ask? Hey, did you pay your bill last month?
It's not random. You bring me your proof of insurance and if you violate.
I could give you proof of insurance and then next month, but it left.
Well, Paul, that's just like you not paying your insurance again, pull over by law enforcement. You're taking that gamble. Is it illegal? Absolutely. Are people gonna do the right thing? Most. Are you gonna have your bad apples? Absolutely.
The other comment I wanted to make and I thought. I is that I I hope everyone understands that the process of considering ordinance. Digesting all the material that Sarah and the RPC and even you, Jesse, have have been compiling. Takes time, because I'm hearing on the street, well, what's taking them so long? How come they didn't pass an ordinance yet? It takes time, like the planning commission talked about. Food vendor. Ordinance for I don't know what.
And you passed that and that doesn't doesn't bring any money to our town or our local businesses at all. If anything, it takes money away from the local businesses in my opinion.
I I think you're you're taking, you're making this adversarial, I think.
Excuse me?
I think you're making adversarial because what I'm saying is it it takes time.
Well, and with all due respect, we've been out a month and last meeting you guys said that we would be discussing approval or not this meeting. And from what I'm gathering, I don't see any sort of decision being made. I see you guys pushing this on for next week and then two weeks down.
We're not stopping pushing anything. We're just getting more information because we've been doing a lot of research. Sarah's been going above and beyond. Jesse has been doing research because you just can't throw it together and say it's just all set. She's been doing a lot of Nick got involved with the mapping. I mean, there's a lot that goes into it because it's gonna fall on us. If something happens that someone that bad apple does something, it is gonna fall on us. So we have to be prepared on what's gonna happen. It's gonna fall on them calling Paul. So we're trying to make sure and through all the research and I've been part of it. Trying to figure out like, what do they have? What do we need to do? What was good? What was bad? So we're not trying to keep passing this buck and saying, we'll do it next week. We'll do it next week. We want to make sure if we see you, you've got six months. Show us what you have and do it only on the dirt roads. And then the next step, like it's going great. There's a few things that happen, but it's going great. Then we can take the next step and say, okay, maybe what can we work out to get you downtown? It's not gonna happen overnight. So that's what we're trying to do.
I understand. And the last meeting, I mean, that unless I heard completely incorrectly. Pretty sure you you were the one that said that this meeting be talking about making a decision of passing a trial period.
Right.
Am I wrong?
No, I said we'll bring it up for discussion again and see if someone, yeah, on the board wants to.
You know, everybody's, everybody has their beliefs about this and I understand legality for them. We want to cover the town. That that's what business is for. That's what government is for, is to protect all the people in this town. At the same time, we're gonna have those that are very passionate about it, you know, it's their freedom, it's their rights. They feel. That they haven't done anything wrong to have their rights taken away. I'm here to try to be the mediator. I understand your concerns. I understand the supporters. You know, we're not asking to reinvent the wheel. I know there's gonna be questions. Paul, I have great concerns. What about they can't sell insurance? Well, that's no different than somebody that has a motor vehicle and they just beep off around town. Um or the invalid registrations that aren't registered. But what we did is we imposed a club. You bring me your valid registration, your valid insurance. You get a some sort of validation sticker or the plate that I talk about. And at that point in time, when you sign up. You're valid.
So let me just ask this question too, cause I thought um. If we said, even if we said, say, you have a trial period, let's say six months, we said, you have a trial period. Cause I know they've already been out and about. So so I I live on the dirt road, so I know I know they have been, so. If we say that, they're gonna say, boom, yippee, we're all set. We're gonna just go out. How is that gonna format into you setting it up and getting it started?
There will be word of mouth because we're a small community and we're travels fast. There'll also be posters around town that I'll put up that say, hey, we're gonna have the first meeting. Um in order to legally drive on any of our roads, you're gonna need to come to this. You're gonna need to bring that documentation to me. You're gonna need to fill out the application. And what's gonna happen is it's gonna give me a a data bit, a data, a databank with all of everybody's information. So. If you see a vehicle out there, you give me the plate number, guess what? I go through paperwork, here's the plate number, guess what? Law enforcement, here you go. This person was seen doing this. Okay, here's a referral.
All right, with that being said. Mary Sue has seen what eight of them the other day?
Yeah, yeah.
And you said one, one had had an O one on it?
It was um I have a copy of my uh email here too. Um more like a dune buggy. It was black with blue trim and the number zero one on each of the doors. Extremely loud exhaust. I mean, we heard it coming for over a mile.
So who's that?
I only I think. Yeah, no, we don't need to say.
I don't care who it was. It's just that, you know, a lot of the drivers and passengers, they weren't wearing any safety gear. Uh actually, the the two leading ones was the the dune buggy one and the whatever the first one was, they were racing. On the straight, as Cheryl knows, the straightaway just south of my house. They were they were passing each other on the road. And it's based on the sound of the loud one, it sounds like they turned up Route one forty because there's no other way. To get back back to the village or wherever they were going. And then about six of them returned uh driving north on Hampshire Hollow Road that evening. One being the noisy uh dune buggy type. And it's it's just very disruptive. You know, we have, we have people walking on the road all the time, bicycling, walking their dogs.
Horses.
Horses, um slow-moving farm equipment. And um they were going way too fast for the road.
So.
It doesn't, it doesn't make it right, though.
It's totally illegal for them to be doing.
Illegal.
Do you see the ordinance as increasing things like that happening? Is that what you're saying? Like you think you think it'll encourage more streets?
I I am only because I can't see the mechanism as to how to regi- register everybody. You know, I think I think Jesse has done a lot of good work on this and a lot of good research. Um but I I can't see a a club self-policing this activity.
I guess it would be like, you could think of it, say that was happening and Jesse and Travis happened to be on that road. It gives you, uh, because you're not gonna run out there and.
No, I didn't even have my cell phone with me.
Say responsible riders were there to say, hey, 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 come here.
Car driver. I stay away from crazy car drivers.
This this is a different niche. It's it's something different. We want to be part of our community. We're not here to be a nuisance for you. If you see a violation, we would hope that you would bring it to our attention so we can try to resolve it and tell our people, you need to stop this. This is behavior that's gonna get this taken away from us.
It's a niche, like it's a group that I think self-police is more than you'd think, like hunters and stuff, like if you. If you catch someone doing illegal baiting or trapping or whatever, like. It is a self-policing community, like.
And it's a privilege that we're gonna wanna police ourselves, so we don't wanna get it taken away. So if like.
It doesn't make that. No, it's it's still, that's true. Not good with.
Well, I mean, we can go around and around, which we're not gonna take the time to do. We can go around and around, but I see the same thing. And and it's not the same because they're bikers, but I also see the snowmobiles and I lived through that where a snowmobile went through my fence and whatever. And they came and took care of it and fixed it and it was sort of pleased by themselves. So I do think in Stoneville's make a lot of noise by at two in the morning. I can hear them from my house passing from one side to the other. So I get all that. I think that's something that's um. I I just, I think the board would have to think about like. And the members that are here, if it's if it's something we want to do a trial period and then. Do we want to look at it and do the research and say, how did they go for that? Whatever time we're talking. I'm just throwing this out. If it was six months, you're talking March, then we meet again and say. Boy, that was horrible. It was terrible. Done. Or say it went pretty well. These are things you have to work on. And then if you're gonna say, now it's gonna be. You know, go in and then we'll talk about after we meet with Sarah, like trying to get people inside, once their connections. I mean, there's a lot of possibilities. Um we're not gonna solve all the all the problems because we don't know what problems we're gonna have. I don't think, I don't think we know all the problems we're gonna have. If we're having problems, maybe it'll go smoothly. They'll place themselves like the snowmobiles go through every year. The bikers have made their niche. I don't know, but I think that's what we have to think about. We can go around and around with. They're going fast and I think we have to think about that. So board members.
I think we'd be better off saying. Like you have a trial period starting this future date. That would give us time to set up this club. Organize everything. Then start.
Doesn't start tonight at eight o'clock.
I hear and sometime do some more research, so you can approve the roads. You wouldn't approve. Every nuance of it, but you would approve the trial period to start on this day, give Sarah some time to look more into it. And if you guys have a subcommittee going, just sounds like you almost knew.
I mean, the issue with that is. When you, when this board is to choose to adopt an ordinance. It has to be posted for so many days. It has to give the public the right to petition that decision. So you can't be like, okay, on date, whatever, you can start. Riding your ATVs on the on the roads of Polley. You gotta, you gotta pass something, a full something. And say, you know, this is valid after sixty days if none of the public petitions to change it. So.
We we could also think about doing it by public votes. In November. And then November ballots. I think that's a some towns have.
We can do whatever the board decides. I'm just thinking that, but most of the time they're not gonna have us in the wintertime, they're not in November. It's gonna be hard to say from November to March. I don't think we're gonna see as many amount. That's not good, yeah.
For the dates to be just.
Board has motion thoughts.
Yeah, I mean, I I I guess planned on. I I just see where there's a lot of logistics, yes, but like I think part of it, since we have. Discussed that it's available to be pulled back. There's not that there's no harm in letting them try, but I think that may be the best way to research it more, like there's just. All of it's speculation until you just do it. And then, you know, like you said, if we just, you know, I I maybe it wouldn't go into effect tonight. Like Alan said, I think maybe we need to. Decide what that means for us, but I I think I would be ready to make a motion to pass it. You know, a six-month trial pretty much is what I'm getting at.
I I mean, with all due respect, I don't I don't know how you make a motion to pass an ordinance that you don't have the ordinance in front of you, what you're passing.
I have.
So you're just gonna pass? I mean, hasn't there been several versions of it?
I haven't, I think, I think everyone was emailing. But we can, like I said, I'm not. I hear you. If you, if we all need to just print it out and. You know, get it out in front of us.
I mean, this is, this was my point that. These things have take time to be thoughtful and to do it correctly. And, you know, I understand that you guys have put a lot of effort into this and it's really important to you. I just think, I mean, I'm also giving you advice, like if it's that important to you, you want to do it right. You want to do it right the first time. If it takes longer than you thought it was gonna take, then. That's it, that's what sometimes it takes to do it right.
So Paul, you're saying if they wanted to pass an ordinance for even six months trial would have to be up for a month? Thirty days?
Sixty, I mean, your ordinance doesn't go into effect. Uh provided that I post it where I'm supposed to post it, publish it in the paper correctly. Um sixty days, it gives the public or someone in the public. Uh the right to petition to say you shouldn't have passed that ordinance.
So that would put put us almost into November anyway, if we decide it right now. If we made a motion to, like, it would take sixty days to even start their engines pretty much. So how?
I've got fourteen days to post it. Uh fourteen days to have it published in a paper. Um it it just, I mean.
Like how much of a difference would it make if we just put it in the November vote? Timelines, like it want, if the vote was passed, would it be effective immediately or was it?
I don't know the answer to that question.
I'm just.
Still an ordinance, it still has to be.
I mean, I'm around the board, so you can do what you think is appropriate.
Legally, we need to know.
So that one. But also I'll remind you.
It's almost October.
This board doesn't have jurisdiction over any of the village roads.
I also have petition for village and I'll do the same process for the village.
Yeah, I I'm just reminding.
I know, you told me that. I remember.
Well, Mary Sue was talking about, those aren't gonna be the same people that I would think would be in the club thing. They're a bunch of hell raisers and I got a good idea. They do the same thing on dirt lanes. And I mean, it's not the board's. Jurisdiction, it's the police officers. You know, it's it's way beyond him running down the road and catching this morning. I mean, it's it's not gonna be anything to do with what these boys are trying to set up. It's it's just, they aren't doing it right. And it's not up to us to catch them. Because I mean, I've seen him do it dirt, right by our camp and they go to middle town.
Nor would you want to.
Well, I'd like to say hi to him.
I mean, it's not his job to chase him down and say, no, you guys are making us look bad.
What's the self-policing is us knowing who it is when we see.
That would be a different. You know, they're gonna be in our club, they're just gonna do what they wanna do.
I guess that would be. Difference does it make if it's gonna take sixty days to pass?
Sixty days till we. Once we say they just want to do it.
It would potentially speed it up compared to a vote in November if we, but it's not a, it's not a big. The timeline is not a, it's not a huge like proactive.
Did you say Castleton was considering having a town meeting or? I'm sorry.
Chief Mantle is doing a real study.
He also said that he may consider having a public meeting about it. And the only reason I didn't bring that up is because the petition has a hundred and sixty signatures. I don't think that Polley needs to undertake a public meeting about it. There's, that's a lot of signatures on your petition. But I do think that, you know, from my perspective, I'd like to do a little more work if we, you know. If Jesse and the crew are open to that, because I think.
If Jesse and the crew are open to that, because I think, sort of what Alan said, you. Can take some time to make it really good the way that you want it to be. Um, if if we have that time. The other ordinances that I reviewed do have specific roads called out. The Westrolynn ordinance is on the road that I live on. Um, is the only road in Westrolynn that you can. Uh, ride an ATV on. So, um. Paul, it does, um. They're they're specific in the areas. So I think, you know, from my perspective, in terms of planning a project that is. A substantial, it could have a substantial impact. You would wanna take the time to thoroughly that every part of it.
Is there any way to form a s- a committee regarding this where it's not like forty five minutes of every select board meeting? And in case something doesn't come to fruition today, like is, I don't know what the legal ramifications are like. Select board, yeah, you want, it's a select board meeting if two or more of us are there. But like, I guess like hashing out all these logistics, it, I think. You know, elephant room is it takes up a lot of time of every meeting. And it's like, I think people are just. Like, let's get something going or, you know, not that it's, but also. I understand that like good things do take time, you know?
Well, yeah, I mean, it's an ad hoc committee. It's sort of functioning as that already. And I think, you know, we made a lot of progress in two weeks after we had that last meeting. And Jesse had, you know, you've been hearing from these folks for a while. They're very thorough in what they're telling you. And I I think you're more close to. Collecting the information that maybe the town needs to feel better about what's or feel as though. We fully understand what has been petitioned.
Question.
Just a quick comment, um, bringing it up on the November election. I I don't think is the way to go at all. Even looking at. I'm told my mother. The minute the older people gets this information, that could be voted down. So any knowledge to people who are out there voting. We don't put other ordinances on the ballot, so. I I guess I think it's an unfair advantage because people are not gonna understand. The workings of the whole thing.
Do you think it has a lowest success rate if it's on the ballot, over percent?
Yeah, I think so.
They're just gonna see ATV, ATV. No, and I'll be like, what? No.
I don't think it needs to be. I don't think it needs to be. I guess my only big thing and and truly I'm a vote is. I don't wanna harp. I think that you guys are doing a lot of work. I know Sarah's doing a lot of work. I don't wanna say. As you say, kick it down the road and then all of a sudden you're gonna do it. It's hard to bring people on board when you don't.
It's getting harder.
It's getting harder and I get that and you're running into the season. So I guess that's my only thing is a timeframe. You have done. We don't do diligence. We've come together. I hear both sides of it, so I guess that's. Um. Right.
I would shoot for spring. So this thing actually don't. But you guys are coming up on here soon anyway. Give us plenty of time. We haven't introduced this to the village yet. It's a whole nother process. And we met with those guys. It was really hammered out over winter. That's in the spring. They actually wanted to be done nicely thoroughly.
I get you while your house delivered, but right now I got a pile of lumber. Well, you know, I know the dream is to have this vision all in place, one drop, poof, there it is. It's beautiful. It's. Most beautiful thing you've ever seen, but in reality, that's not what I can give you.
Yeah, same thing. I'm building a house right now and I'm taking my damn time, so I wanted to be there forever. And I think you should have the same mentality with this ordinance. I think you should slow down. I know it's exciting. I'm for it. But I think you just need to put the brakes on and do it thoroughly. Means, I guess that's gonna come to every meeting until we say pass this thing half date and have it fail. Doesn't make any sense at this point. Just take your time, go slow, have it thorough, go for the list, get the village involved. Do more research, work with Sarah, work with your resources and then go for it.
When we, uh, when the planning commission was, um. Researching and working on the food truck ordinance, we. We had a public informational meeting where specifically, in in addition to the public being invited. We also had all the restaurant owners invited to this. And and we had a a lot of good feedback from everybody. And it really helped us in writing an ordinance that suited our town. And we did, we did check, you know, surrounding towns to see how they handled theirs, which was a really good template for us to start with. But then we we tweaked it and we refined it in order to fit our community with the input of other people. Well, we, we, Mary, Mary Sue, we have had meetings. That's what these meetings are. We've had hep meetings. Jesse has been and doing it. We haven't asked for the town and the restaurant owners because we're not there yet. We're not at that point where they're gonna go in. So they can say, we'd love to have all of them come here, but that's the first step. We're like, we don't want them to go down right now and use the gas station and go to the toads. No, my, my, so, um, what I was saying is we involve the public. In this. I'm not saying that this is what you should do. I'm saying that when we did this, we involved the public. And when I was talking to some of my friends and neighbors, they have no idea that this is happening. No idea. So I think in some meetings, we just come to the meetings. I, yep. They're speaking to the choir.
Lost on baseball by any chance?
So I try not to look down. Questions on the board on suggesting.
I just, it sounds like. We need to deliberate more from the sounds of it.
Yeah.
Like, unfortunately, I know people won't answer, but. Yeah, uh, we, um, maybe next meeting. You know, again, I think the frustration is they don't wanna feel bullied into making a decision. Like, but I also think from Jesse's point, he doesn't wanna lose steam and the more we just roll this down the hill and then people don't care about it anymore. And it's like.
I mean, the comment before, I'll stand by it. All government, they like to kick the can and tell people lose interest and they have all fall or support.
No, I think most of us want it. As you're reading the reading, I think it has support here. We've done well.
Yeah.
I heard, we've been working on other projects for years, this board, and we're taking our time to them and done well.
Well, if I can get feedback on the ordinance or needs improvements, please let me know.
All right, we'll make sure that.
Yeah, it's pretty well written. We'll get physical copies of it, like Paul said, so we're not passing something that may or may not have been read fully by everybody.
Right.
Um, and then we can make, we can make notes on the physical copies and things like that.
Can we form a subcommittee? Can we do that with just two members that are?
Just two members.
Two or less.
Yeah, Sarah is involved in this.
Yeah.
Come back and report to this.
Yeah, I'll be on the ATV subcommittee and like, you know, if that's.
That's how it would work it.
Yeah.
We actually get things done.
That way we don't have an hour long select board meeting about it and try to.
All right, well, I think that's the, what we'll do. We'll continue with Sarah and Jesse having a subcommittee if you're willing to do that. And I apologize. I'm sorry. We didn't come up with the answer you want tonight. The board spoke and we want to.
We need to form that subcommittee tonight in the board?
I think we already have. Nope, we don't need to form. I think we already have it. If he wants to do it, unless you wanna do it, then take my place easily. That's what we want to do.
It's okay.
I think my first thing, it'd be a great idea to get an action for the village. And now that you have all the information, you get right to the village and that is, which would be great. That will. Sarah, look at your schedule and set something up.
Okay, okay.
I thank you for all that you're doing. I I think it's gonna be a great thing. I think it's something that I think will work out. I think you're doing, you're diligent. You're doing your homework. So I appreciate it. I know a lot of people do. And I know there's a lot on Zoom too. I appreciate your. Doing it. Um, thanks.
Yeah, just have faith that it's, um, we're not kicking the can for the sake of kicking the can. I think you can tell. Gen- genuine supporters.
Yeah, like we're genuinely just trying not to, yeah. Mess things up.
I like what I plan as well.
Yeah, it's just.
Thank you, Nick, for the map. Great step for everything. That that'll be a visual. We do set, get the ordinance and we do have a meeting, but that's a great visual that people actually see.
Yeah.
So I appreciate it.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
I do have three other things under the green light. Thank you. Well. So the, uh, rec health projects is. Um, I just wanted to provide enough to the commit to the board, um, that the conceptual designs for that are being presented to a different subcommittee. The Town and Trails Committee on October seventh. Um, the final concepts, uh, they're just purely design concepts, visions, uh, for the, for the, uh, locations. Will be presented to this board in either late October or early November. Um, I think it was brought up here. I wanted to let folks know that the. Concepts will include some type of, um, housing development on propose, well, not propose, but just, uh, in the designs for that location. Um, there's been, uh, several committee meetings that. Where the architects and landscape architects, um. And have subdivided the site in their minds and said, you know, you have a pretty sizable location here and housing development would be. A really, um, really beneficial inclusion in this project. Um, it would also potentially help you, uh, to fund it. So just as a heads up, there will be some housing.
And Sarah, this is a community thing, so it's not just like a bike hub. It's something that for community meetings and communities to be there. Am I correct with that?
Right, uh, right. And this is funded by a grant from the Outdoor Recreation Roundtable.
Right. I think that's important for people to know. It's been a question asked, like, is it just a bike hub? No, it's a community.
It's a community facility and it has been, um, it's a, um, a product or an implement. A recommendation of the Better Connections Project, the Town to Trails, um, project. So. Uh, that will be forthcoming. But we have a great consulting team, so we will, um, look forward to that later this fall. Um, I did put grant administration on the agenda, um, simply to give a heads up that there are three grants that are closing right now. Uh, the administrative, Nisha and Joel and I are are working on one of them, the MRGP that Joel mentioned earlier. But, um, the municipal planning grant and the mini grant, um, we are reconciling right now. So. Um, Nisha is really involved in that work. Um, so the. Heads up that there is a fair amount of administrative tasks that I'm doing, that we've done right now. Um, and then the other, there was one other additional item that I wanted to add that is not on the agenda, um. Wanted to let the boards, board know that I submitted an application. Um. A pre-application to eight oh two homes, uh, which is a prob. It is a program from the Agency of Commerce and Community Development. Um, they were looking for communities, pilot communities, um. That are ready to serve as the development ready communities. They will select three from the state. Um, I submitted the application because there was a short timeline and, um. If we are in the running, there would be a follow up interview. So essentially this program is, um, pr- would provide to those three pilot communities. Plans, uh, tailored to the specific community for residential, um, development for potentially from ADUs to four minute homes. Um, those communities would have early access to a catalog of ten ready to build code compliant homes. Um, it would help us to identify opportunities for infill housing in the community. And then, um. It talks about, um, streamlined permitting approaches and, uh, just supporting a statewide model. So. Um, we'd be very lucky to be selected for that, but it's highly competitive. I don't know that.
And they're picking three, yeah, from the state.
Yeah, yeah. And so that catalog that will be developed with the pilot communities will be eventually be available to all statewide. But, um, the the pilot communities will be first in.
Okay, well, that's good.
And you're great.
Don't say that was easy.
Thank you. Um, so that's it. That's very good.
Paul, can we skip to, well, Hunter?
Yeah, of course. I just want, I guess, I could become Andy so everyone on the stock board can see the face of our new, uh, transportation superintendent.
Let you know it was one of our rec kids years ago. It's a community.
So Hunter's been getting some feedback from the community, if if I could say that, right?
Yes.
While you're up in that position and.
Yeah.
Um.
We've had a lot of concerns about the free pile, um. People are not wanting to pay proper prices for throwing stuff out. That seems to be a huge problem too, because there was a lot of undercharging before. Um, a lot of people, like contractors that are not community members, that didn't have dump stickers that have been dumping stuff in the past. We've been running into a lot of that.
I think you're, need to run a tight ship up there and.
Yeah.
Can explain all that. You're just the, you're just the guy.
Can you tell us a little bit about yourself? That's what I was gonna have to start with. A little bit about you first, because I mean, I know you're from when you were little, but a little bit about you and why you kind of wanted that job so people know a little bit about you.
So I've lived in Polley my entire life. And been around, well, my dad. Works at West Scott, so I've been in town a long time. Just being a member. I went to Stafford for welding. Just needed to try something new for a while.
You're getting your CBL, correct?
Yes, I am.
I understand there are a lot of changes going on up there that a lot of people aren't aware of. Where are these changes being, um? How are you getting them out? Just verbally or are they on our website? I couldn't find anything the other day and our rates, I understand are going up. That I had no idea either.
Our rates have not. The only thing that's gone up for our rates are mattresses and box springs.
Okay, well, that's not what I've been hearing, but I wanted to.
I think what. I think that's what you might be.
Yeah, that's.
They'll freeze up. They have to penalize it there.
The, the, I think, you know, the bottle, the can.
Well, I actually have bottle, bottle drives on the agenda tonight, uh, cause I know a lot of people have been. Asking about that. Are you gonna continue doing it? Um. I hear you're gonna stop doing it, so I thought it was worth talking about it in an open meeting. That's why I have it on the agenda.
And I think that, uh, Hunter's talked about, I know with Joel and Dicky too, about putting some new signage out there. We talked about getting some new signs made that have more. Where things are, uh, bull board, maybe that has a sign of when things are happening, whether it's paint day or hazardous waste day. So there are a lot of good things, positive things, and, um, I think he can take his time and think what really needs to be and bring it back to the board. You know, I'm thinking this would work and this would work. Be happy to have you do that. Once you feel comfortable that you can come and let us know if you have a great idea. I mean, I know today you were bush hogging, brush hogging and weed whacking.
Yep, I kind of neglected this year, so I took care of that today. Bush hogged and weed whacked it up there.
No, we appreciate you. And if you have anything, remember, if you have any big questions, always call here first instead of hearing it from somebody else. You know?
So I guess to touch on what you were saying, Val, I think it's important to kind of talk about that because. Currently, there are no scales at the transfer station. And some years ago. I don't know how many years ago, the the board of the prime decided they were gonna charge by, um, yardage. So many dollars for this yard, one ton truck, if it's full is like three yards. And, um. You know, I I've heard that since Hunter's been out there, people have been like, what do you mean this is eighty dollars? This used to be twenty dollars. And I I I suspect there was a lot of that. And I know there was some particularly, um. Cause I've I've seen it with my face when I've been up there. Some, you know, one of the attendants will say, oh, that's thirty dollars. Thirty dollars, come on. I'll give you twenty. Like. You know, and they think it's, they think it's, you know, it's a negotiating thing and it's, and I think we need to, and I think Hunter understands that. Um, you know, he uses his best judgment. He's not trying to overcharge anybody, but if you're not weighing it. And and, you know, frankly, I think he's told people and I I've told me, you could say to people. If if you think you can go somewhere else and get it weighed in, there's other facilities you could bring it to. And I think we learn, we're running into that with a lot of contractors. And, you know, I I kind of wonder. You know, mo- I think mostly contractors are using, are filling those demolition boxes. Uh, fairly rarely. And I I wonder my, to myself, like, why is a town taking on? You know, a contractor's job, basically. Um, particularly if we can't weigh it and actually get the. You know, get the precise what what it's gonna cost for us to dispose of it. Um.
Do we, do we still have the scale somewhere? I know that was a blunt contention that we got them and they were.
Often portable scales several years ago, and I think at the time. Uh. I think at the time, um.
The place where we could put.
A highway foreman was was getting pressured by the board and. And and he bought the scales, but we never implemented them.
Right.
Cause I said. How are you gonna, who's gonna run the scale?
Yeah.
Right.
Um.
It's two trips across the scales to make them work.
Yeah, but horrible stuff like that. I don't see it being very feasible up there, especially with the dump trailers.
Should they get rid of it? It's so funny because we have, we bought them.
Even. Even a dual vehicle, there's four scales. I have four scales at the garage. How are you gonna get, how are you gonna get all four rear tires? On two scales? How are you gonna get, how are you gonna get all four rear tires on two scales? Without cramping up the inner tire and then just putting all the weight on the inner tire. It's not, it's not gonna work. Where's the flat ground up there?
I know, I know. Dan had talked about that happening up in the flag. I'm just saying we have them, so if they're no use, then we need to figure out, we don't maybe we could sell them, make a little bit of money, but just have them. We bought them. They were bought and um, so we have to use them, but but um, but thank you, Hunter. We appreciate it. Welcome aboard. We're glad you're there. Any questions, please? Make sure you can call the office, Paul. I know you have Joel and Dicky's number. If there's anything you question. Um, if you wanna make it, but keep your notebook. If there's anything that you think's a great idea, run it by us, let us know. I think the biggest thing is the board doesn't like any surprises, like someone coming to us and telling us something's up there. We're like, oh, I don't know that. But that's not my only suggestion, but happy to have you. Oh, I think it's, yeah. So what does the board think about the bottle drives and the bottles up there?
They were shutting down the bottle drive up there. Some other community group wanted to step up and act as that kind of thing. They're more than welcome to. I think a town needs to be in the redemption business.
I'm sure that, it's not one of Hunter's job to take the bottles in and um collect them and give the money to whoever has it too, so that's another thing. Patty, have a question or a comment?
Well, just a couple of comments. I'm one of these people that I really don't wanna see other skins of bottles go into the dumpster. There's money there. So I spoke with Paul. Paul said, go ahead last week, the last two weeks. And threw the bottles, and I did. And I have the envelopes here with the money and the, and within two weeks' time, we have hang on, um three hundred and eighty-five dollars. And that's after my husband and I, like, we sort them, take them to gravel. And because they're so good to us, they come out and unload the trailer for me, cause we have anywhere from fifteen to twenty, thirty bags. And so we tip them ten dollars just for doing it. But, and we don't mind.
Is that a job you're interested in? Is that what you're telling us?
Well, I would yes and no, yes.
I don't, I, we don't have that in the, our supervisors.
I, I guess, I mean, as I said, here's money sitting here. I don't know what you want me to do with it. I'll continue collecting. It can be turned in to the town hall once a month, or I could do the fundraisers, but there's gotta be some guidelines. Because we ended up bringing two bags of garbage back to the, the dump, doing cat food cans and.
Would you consider writing up some guidelines that you think would work and then you could, that could be sent out to the whole?
New ones, so it doesn't need to go through the town. Like, there was a bunch of this before, but who was deciding who gets the money? Who can have the fundraiser up there? That's not what that place is for. It's a transfer station. Have some other group deal with that. Don't throw them away if you don't want to. If you bring up the dump, they recycle environmentally. It's great.
Yes.
Someone loses out on money. If some other group wants to make a decision to put up a box anywhere, like the high schools, great, but the town isn't in the redemption business.
No, I realize that. I just hate to see that money dumped.
I would say.
You know, because over the course of the year, you're talking about.
Maybe you could get it put it by the high school. Maybe the high school, like, get the box there and then it'll be make your life easier. Do something with that.
I mean, for my observations going to the transfer station in my own personal capacity is, i- it turns into social power. And, and you know, you got people parked there for forty-five minutes. When people, it's a transactional place. You're supposed to go do your business and leave. Not like hang out with the people doing the bottle drive. And then it turns into a, a, a silent auction of uh whatever. Buy, buy this rapple ticket. Then it turns into, hey, if you don't want, if you don't have bottles and you wanna give us money, give us money. It's like morphed into this this thing that I don't know.
Very social place. Don't be stoked.
I might add that I've learned recently that a redemption center is um, I learned which locations zoning districts in Polley, a redemption center is um zoned for. Um, so a redemption center is a business. Um, and I can't say anything more about why I learned that, but for what that's worth, it, it is a business.
Yes.
I think the only thing that I would say is, I'm guilty. I use it because I don't take my bottles anywhere else. If you, maybe the kid or someone will use them, so that's where the money goes. It's easier when I bring garbage than bring a bag of things. So I'm thinking if it was anywhere else, Patty, if that's something that you thought by school, maybe someone would say, I'm gonna go to the dump and I'm gonna drop these bottles in here and you can have guidelines on it, however you choose. Um, I know that they did not have guidelines on it up at the dump. Now you brought all your bottles, you dumped it there and they sorted them out for you. So I don't know. That's something if you want to undertake it at the high school or wherever, and then maybe it could be a booster club thing. Have a big, big box and um have the ball, and the money goes to the booster club and they could help you support.
Um, yeah, I know in the past, the bottom money's been fired apart for versus, young and hard.
Women's Club's on it.
Women's Club, I mean, there, and so the money goes to good use. I just don't wanna see it thrown around. Like, with this money, I'm gonna hand this over tonight. You do what you want, but it's three hundred and ninety-five dollars for two weeks.
Yeah. Well, it's definitely, Daniel, a lot of money, you gave a lot of money out. It's just maybe someone at the high school, the booster club would wanna say, there was a fire, there was a death or someone needs it, then this week's bottle drive goes to seven cell. You know, I mean.
Well, that's the other thing, the way it's been going on up there. People are like, well, how come that place has been up there three weeks in a row? How come they're not letting somebody else up there?
Right.
And you know, it's, and, and then you got the, the attendants that are expected to go through the recycling and pull out all the dark, out the cans, because they feel like the pressure to do that.
You know, someone was told us that they could do that. That was told when you brought them up there. Just give us your bottles and we'll sweat.
I, I'm saying the attendants, when it gets dumped in
No, I know.
The recycling.
So are we all?
Reach in there and pull out.
The deposit box. Are we in agreement that they're holding out, no more bottles brought up there? I just think we have to make sure that people know that if there's no bottles up there, then maybe if you're doing something, at least you can deter them in the right direction, say new bottle drives or whatever, drop your bottles off somewhere at the high school, if that's truly what they think they wanna do.
Going to the Bridge Canyon Castle town.
Good job.
You need to make a sign to uh wherever you change the location to.
Right.
There needs to be a sign at that transfer station. I don't know how many things that we've said. This is, this is what happens. Ashes do not go in the leaf pile and before you know it, the transfer station doesn't take leaves anymore. Uh, they won't ever burn the fire again, and now cat litter's going in the recyclables. I mean, a- and I'm no kidding, the stories get that misconstrued up there.
I know.
So if you don't have this written in a sign, hard copy written somewhere, people are going to spin that.
That's true.
I don't know why, I don't know how, but it's going to come out as some ungodly story.
I know, Hunter, I talked about a lot of signs that you would like to put up, so people are aware of compost, this, that, and everything else. So it's a nice sign. It's not something spray painted that we know exactly where things go. That might take a little bit to tell them, no bottles here. You gotta take them back with you where they drop off, so that's something.
It's my understanding that someone, as I said, of the dump is going to continue running. Meantime, I'm gonna hand this money over to you.
We could either motion or just say, agree with the board or.
But make a motion that we're gonna decon- discontinue bottle drives at the transfer station?
For, for the time being?
I don't know. I'm gonna say for the time being. You can say that. Yeah, even.
So never can discontinue bottle drives, the transfer station.
Okay, bottles that are brought there will be recycled. Valerie seconded it, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Hunter, did you get that? You're still here? Yeah, we'll try to get a hold of, over the time, Joel to um get some signage made. But we will put that up. I don't know. Uh, we'll just make sure that's up there somewhere. The transportation no longer doing bottle drives. And if you hear something that's having it, let us know. We can certainly further in the right direction.
Yeah.
Yeah, they do wanna do it. Oh, sorry, Nancy didn't see you.
That's okay. Are we gonna talk about the free stuff?
Yes.
Okay, that was my comment about free stuff.
Free stuff. Uh, Hunter, you've already been dealing with that a little bit. Do you wanna talk about it? Do you want us to talk about it?
Uh, I can touch on it a little bit.
Okay.
So, right now with the free pile, I am making people pay to throw things out if it's something that needs to go in a bin that costs money to throw out. And if I have been, if someone puts pretty much junk or trash in that free pile, I have been disposing of it. Because it does not look good up there. I get that it's a transfer station, you do dump trash there, but I think it could look better up there.
Well, no one should be dumping a chair that they don't wanna pay five bucks to, an old chair that no one's gonna take anyway. So that should be your judgment call, I would say. I don't know if the board agrees. I'm thinking, because you shouldn't put a chair. The thing is, I think someone might want this chair. I mean, that's gonna have to be a judgment call. We can't just put everything there. That's gonna be really tricky.
And I guess, I don't wanna speak for you, Hunter, but I think what he's trying to say is if, if um, even if that looks like a good chair, you don't know if someone's gonna take that chair.
Yeah, no, like, I think one of the things people have been using that free pile for in the past is a way out of having to just pay to dispose of things. Is using that free pile as a way, oh, somebody might take this, so I don't have to pay to throw it out. And there's been multiple occasions up there in the very short period of time I've been working that someone goes to put a chair out there, something that should go in the furniture bin, and I tell them they have to pay to leave it in the free pile still, and it usually ends up in the back of their vehicle and they leave with it. Cause they don't wanna pay to throw it out.
And you, at the end of the day, though, you take everything that's in the free pile. Does that already go, that goes right into the garbage anyways, correct?
Yes, anything left in the free pile, at the end of the day, the very little that I let sit there, um it ends up getting thrown out.
Even if it was a new frame or something new, no one took it, it's.
It gets thrown out.
Does that answer your question, Nancy, or no?
Me, yeah, my, my comment is, is that I think there's a lot that gets recycled out of that bin. Like, I'm gonna go there a lot, but I've literally been there with stuff and people gone, oh, don't, you, don't put that in the pile, just put it right into my truck. Like, I don't want it, but they want it. Or like, I ha- I go with flower pots, for example. Nice flower pots that I'm, I'm a flower pot collector. So I'll go with a whole box of flower pots and they're gone before I even leave the landfill, the, the transfer station. And it just doesn't make sense to me. And the other thing is, I think our town's gonna turn into a trash heap cause everybody's gonna put it on the curb and it's gonna sit along the sides of the roads.
That's not gonna happen. We're working on that.
But, but I do think, I mean, this is a funny story and I won't bore it, but I have gone into a house that's for sale and seen stuff, artwork on the walls that I put in the free pile. And the person said, oh, I bought that at a tag sale. So they weren't the one that picked it up. Somebody else picked it up and sold it for two bucks and now it's hanging in their house. So
It's good.
It wasn't in the landfill. It wasn't in the dump somewhere, cause somebody's junk is somebody's treasure and.
But not everything, so there's gotta be a fine line, because it's not fair for them. At the end of the day, they have to take all that stuff that people put there and they have.
How much is really left, would be my question. Mine, I don't think there's a lot left at the end of the day.
If I was up there on Saturday, at the end of the day, there was probably a lot of those, there were a bunch of school, oh, it's sort of before dealing with school chairs and a bunch of stack of dishes or teacups. There was a, a couple of big stacks of stuff that was there. I think like dishes and stuff like that, a lot of people are not in the habit of taking.
Sometimes a lot, based off of my time with the town and going up to the transfer station. The end of some days, we've thrown a bunch of stuff away and the other, the end of other days. And then there's very little. And in the wintertime, you know, I'm sure Hunter's not gonna have a huge pile out there in winter. And there rarely ever has been.
What if you put on cutoff at like after one PM, no more free stuff? So that people really have a chance to go through it and take it. And if you wanna put stuff out free, you gotta get it there in the morning. For an example, just so that people aren't coming at four o'clock and throwing a bunch of crap out there that has, that nobody's gonna have a chance to take.
I mean, I think the distinction is that Hunter is, yeah, yeah, you wanna put that in the free pile. But if I have to throw it away, it's gonna cost us four dollars to throw it away. So if you wanna put it in the free pile, that's fine. It's gonna cost you four dollars. Or throw it away, and it's gonna cost you four dollars. Is that right?
That's exactly what I'm doing. It's completely up to their judgment on whether or not they wanna put it in the free pile or not, but they're still gonna have to pay to throw it out, cause it's gonna cost the town money to throw it out at the end of the day.
We're gonna have to see how that goes for a few more weeks and report back.
Yes, I think that's a great idea.
Cause I, I did have one gentleman, this was several years ago, come to me and say, those guys up there charged me, throw, throw this stuff, these perfectly fine chairs, and before I even left, someone was scooping them out of the dumpster. So I, when I bring something else up there, I'm not, I'm gonna make sure it's not usable. And he did. He brought a sledgehammer the next time. And, and he broke up all the chairs. He said, if I'm paying to get rid of this, I'm gonna make sure no one else can use it.
Hopefully, most people aren't like that, but.
Can we address one other thing? Dump stickers haven't been required for some time and people from New York State and those.
Yes, well, they are now, so.
They, uh, they went up there and checked mine, not only the month since the regime changed, but. My, yeah.
That's my question. How come they're being sold to New York State people and?
We get a lot of people from the lake that are still up here, people that are part-time or suburbs. So we do have a lot of people that, I was looking at that today, actually. How many people we have that get dump stickers and that are not. They get bags and they pay, so, yeah. Not here the whole time, but a lot of them are here. I checked up.
I mean, there, there are some, cause actually, uh, Nisha told me today that someone came in and said, oh, yeah, I live in Whitehall. I've been going to that transfer station for years. She's like, what do you mean? And, you know, I don't think it's a thousand people. I don't think it's even a hundred people, but
A lot of them.
But you're probably right. But also, someone might live in Hampton and they have a house on, in Lake.
How can they cut from Whitehall and put their, if they don't own property, how do they get a sticker? How do they get uh bags and stuff that they live in Whitehall?
The guy said, I, I never knew I was supposed to have a sticker up here. James, you're not even supposed to be using that facility if you live in Whitehall.
Then how are you getting yellow bags?
So I can debunk what happened there. That was a contractor who has been dumping shingles there. Because he was under the assumption that he could dump shingles there for a very heaven's discount price to any other place that he could dispose of them. And when I went to go check him out, he did not have dump sticker. And I sent him down here. I was not under the, I did not know he was from that far away. Thought he was from remote.
Right.
But now knowing that, I know exactly who it was.
No, I say, but if he came down here and got one.
He didn't get one. She said, you don't, you don't own Polley, I'm not getting a little sticker.
All right, thank you.
So, first of all, straight said, they don't check stickers.
Well, I think that that's think that that's changing and um it has a clipboard, it has the message, and they actually put their own dumpster too. I didn't even know my own number. I don't know my own number, so, um, thank you, thank you for bringing it up. Thank you, Hunter. Not the only one. A lot of people love that free style. All right, Hunter, do you have any questions for us?
I don't.
Oh, okay, thank you. Anything online? Anybody have questions online?
Do you have access to a good measure, for measuring beds and stuff? Is it, it's all based on volume, right?
The mattresses and box springs are not based on volume.
No, no, with the, with the measure of beds. Yeah, just this very little pocket.
We did clean out the office very nicely, so, yeah, that's good, but.
Good job, man.
Thank you, thank you. Great. Um, okay, let's move on. How management report? If there's any questions, it's me, hands up.
I don't have anything else. I think the only thing I
Transfer station covered. Okay, any other lawful business? Okay, Redland Region Planning Commission, Sarah?
Uh, yep, so the Board of Commissioners met um Tuesday, September sixteenth. It was the first meeting after the summer recess. Uh, the main item on the agenda was the Commissioners approving uh the draft plan of the, the draft regional plan to submit to the Land Use Review Board. So that happened. Um, and so the next process, the, the process continues for um, readoption of the regional plan. Um, I'm trying to scroll through and like cherry pick some of this. There is, it's still um an extensive process to get through to adoption. Um, and so as part of that, the Land Use Review Board will be visiting the communities. They're coming to Rottman County, I believe, in October sixteenth. Um, I don't know if they'll be coming to Polley to um, to visit, but they will be in the county um, on October six- sixteenth. So this is the committee that would ultimately approve the re- the um, the updated regional plan. Um, some of the other items in Devon's Director's Report that are of interest to Polley, um, the regional plan. Um, the Regional Planning Commission is helping Cedar to compile this year's regional priority project list, which will be in October. Um, in the past, Holtley has always submitted a priority project, um. And we will likely do that again, so, um, I'm open to feedback as to what that should be. Uh, it was a little bit more clear in the past when we were, you know, sort of working in a different. Um, environment moving towards, um, outdoor recreation, um, so we had some marketing one year for outdoor recreation, that was in twenty twenty. Um, we have submitted in the past for the Greenmount College Campus redevelopment, we submitted that two years in a row. Um, and we also submitted for Holtley's Recreation Hub in the past. Um, so if anyone has ideas about what to, what we should be submitting for now, please let me know, it does help for grant applications. Um, to be on that priority project list. Um, some other things that are of importance probably, uh, there will be a complete streets training for town road crews, board members and staff. Tentatively scheduled for October twenty-third at, in the West Rutland Auditorium. Um, Ethan is the contact for that. There is information about a regional emergency management committee. And Rutland Regional Disaster Cooperative, um, a subregion all hazards discussion is scheduled for October fifteenth of twenty twenty-five, so. If you want, if anyone wants more information on those, let me know, I can send it to you. That's it.
Five meetings, Emma, that's it. Great, thank you, Sarah. Public comments, questions, comments, public, if anybody online or here, very soon, um.
Any update on the delinquent tax sales commencing?
No.
Is there a particular holdup?
No, no particular holdup.
Any update on the zoning administrator report on the potential garage sale on East Main Street?
Sent them a certified letter on September sixteenth. Given them thirty days to clean up the property.
That's the first steps that passed, yeah.
Thank you for that, and. Sarah, I have a question for you, um. Let me see if I can get my scribbles here. Regarding the Rec Hub project, is that, that's the one down by the town garage?
Uh, yes, it's a, we, the town had a grant about, well, I guess it was in twenty twenty-four for. Um, investigating the feasibility and repurposing of the town garage site. Into a rec up.
Yeah, and you, you mentioned that. There's going to be. Um, housing development included, is, is there an issue with it being, is that in a flood zone?
Uh, so we have professional licensed landscape architects and architects on staff, that, uh, we're, we, we went through a, a bidding process for that, because it. It is a rather high profile project, uh, so that is their responsibility to take into account any constraints of the site.
Oh, okay, okay, so if it looks like there's something that could be a detriment to building, would they build on stilts or something?
Um, we're not that far along, and, no, it's, it's entirely conceptual, and there is. Uh, you know, just to be clear, too, there is no, um, directive from the SEC Board or the town to act on any of this, it's entirely. Aspirational visionary project.
Okay, okay, sounds good, though. Um, so there's, for anybody, is there any new info on the highway garage, uh, the bank buildings at this point?
Um, the bank building, the board has gotta, um. Sign some, uh, bond paperwork, and that hopefully will be in the next, probably, probably by our next meeting. Um, Bond Council is working on it, to my knowledge. Uh, just the wording and whatnot, and then they advise publication dates, et cetera, so. Um, for that, that's what, where we're at with that project, the highway, we're, we're still, um. Um. Well, actually, we're still considering a couple different perspective sites. Uh, the one that I think we were pursuing the most, um. Kind of fallen radio silent on the owner at this point, um. I reached out to them probably two weeks ago, to get a status, and I hadn't heard back from them. So I've gotta get a definitive answer whether or not they wanna move forward with a prospective plan.
I did notice that they moved all the green, remote tanks out, those. I didn't notice that, yes, yes, yeah.
Anybody else?
Sure.
Anybody online? Have any questions? Give them out. Great, gonna be the board orders now, or we come out of executive session?
I would do it now.
Okay, have a motion to accept the board orders.
Yes, that would make the motion to resign them as is.
Okay, second? Seconded by Alan, all favor? Any opposed? Board orders? Now we will enter into executive session, Sarah.
With, with Sarah.
With Sarah, yeah, for contract issue.
Going to one V S A, section three thirteen, A one A, and make a motion for finding the premature general public hours, to clearly place this board. First involved in national discipline in a certain manner, play the contracts for discuss outside executive session.
I second that.
Going to one V S A, section three thirteen, A one A, and make a motion to enter into executive, that needs to discuss contract matters.
Before we just go in, I, I forgot to mention too, Joel just brought to my attention that the fire pits, firemen didn't. Didn't send out a thing on the burn ban, after their biggest, I think everybody got it on an email or something, but they did say a burn, burn ban. For no fires or fire pits. Um, I don't look fun at you, but at my house, it's dry, dry, dry.
Any of those fire pits?
I can't tell you about Vermont's standards, but.
Isn't that what that happened on, a spark, I know if I have a fire, a spark comes out of mine, it's, it's golden dry, yeah, I think it was all fires. Don't quote me on that, but I know that something was sent out, so if you have any questions, please look at that, because there was, they just went to a rescue, and they said they wanted, oh, come on, it is so dry. Make sure we mention that.
There wouldn't take much.
Yeah.
That's one reason the, um. Part of the, um, football people did not have it.
All right, so thank you, Alan, enter executive session at.
I already wrote the time down.
Thank you, Paul.
Eight thirty-five P M, uh, Jay Morgan made a motion to leave executive session. Alan Glenn Burnell seconded the motion, motion carried with all in favor, no action taken.
Thank you, motion to adjourn.
Second that.
Seconded by Jay, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried.